Chairman.
Will do. Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided in the following ways. Notice posted in the Curry News, notice posted on the Bolton Board in Municipal Building, notice made available at the Town, Township Clerk, and notice sent to the Curry News and the Stall Legion. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Weissman?
Here.
Mr. Tillery?
Here.
Mr. Patel?
Here.
Mr. Reggio?
Here.
Mr. Blount?
Here.
Mr. Hidaka?
Here.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Here.
And Chairman Cahill?
Here. Will everyone please?
Excuse, I'm sorry Chairman, one second. Mr. Ali, will you be joining us this evening? Or are you gonna? I know you have to go.
Yes.
Okay, so Mr. Ali is here.
Thank you, Mr. Ali. Will everyone please stand for a salute to the flag?
From the legions, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Kinney, do we have any changes to tonight's agenda?
Yes, we have a number of changes to tonight's agenda. The application of NBAD 1 on Park Avenue is adjourned until February 9th with no further notice. The Supardi application on Runyon Avenue has been withdrawn and will not be heard. 100 Lakeview is adjourned until January 25th with no further notice. And Mr. Chairman, I must note that this has been adjourned quite a few times. Would you like me to send them a letter?
Yeah, I think that we should dismiss this without prejudice.
Okay, I'll tell them that if they're not ready to go on the 25th, we'll entertain a motion to dismiss.
Yes, I appreciate that, Mr. Kinney, thank you.
The last change we have is LNR properties on Normandy Drive. That's adjourned until January 25th, 2024 with no further notice.
Got it, thank you very much, sir. Let's move ahead to item number 6, 23-ZB-81V, Alan Cruz. Is Mr. Cruz present?
Hello, everyone, yes, I am present.
Sir, I need to swear you in, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Absolutely.
Your name and address, please?
Alan Cruz, 781 Maple Avenue, Piscataway, New Jersey.
Thank you, can you explain to the board what you'd like to do here?
Yes, hello, thank you, everyone, for your time, first of all. I would like to, I have a fence on the side of my house that is on Hamilton Boulevard, and it's a short fence on the back half of the property. And I wanted to bring that fence outward and then also forward on Maple Avenue, which is the front side of my property, just to wrap around it to the left if you were facing that, the house in that direction, or north, the north side.
Did you receive, receive Mr. Hinterstein's report of October 26th?
Yes, yes, I did.
And can you comply with those items?
Yes, my one request, and on this, the list was also a mention of the shed, which I just want to acknowledge, that was only a point two difference deviation from the required three feet. And according to the notice, he deemed it minimal, so I appreciate that if that's acceptable. But with the proposed side on Hamilton Avenue, I believe his proposed, his proposal says 15 feet from the Hamilton Boulevard side. And obviously, you know, wanting to maximize safety and space, I was requesting to have it closer to our property line, possibly 10 feet or six feet or whatever I could possibly get.
And Mr. Chadwick, can you weigh in on that?
Let me just, let me just comment, the board has had requests for fences in the front yard area and has almost, you know, you, almost always has required a minimum of 15 feet or more. And that all has to do with the maintaining a roadscape as opposed to fences out on the roadway. And I support Henry's recommendation.
And Mr. Hinterstein's report also notes that your current proposal places the fence in the site triangle easement. That would be a safety issue. Correct.
Yes, no, I, and if I may ask? I'm sorry?
No, that was, uh.
Apologies. So, yeah, you know, again, and, you know, first time homeowner, so forgive me, you know, for not knowing and forgive me in advance for any additional questions. But, you know, I had seen, you know, my family and I were asking, I was asking also in addition to that far out, being that, you know, in, in, in our neighborhood or in and around our neighborhood, you know, I've seen also corner properties with the, the fence pushed out as, you know, 10, 12 feet from the curb line. So that was one part of the nature of my request. And of course, I wouldn't want anything to hinder any safety, and I don't pretend to know the details of the site triangle. But would it, would it make a difference if for our front fence, the Maple side, if we were to be 25 feet back from there, would that gain us any additional on the Hamilton Boulevard side? I, you know?
No, no, they're not related.
Okay, okay, well, again, I, I leave it to you, but I, you know, I'm requesting to have as much as I possibly could, of course.
There's, there's a process in getting a variance that you haven't addressed at all. I don't expect you to do that because you would add, you would tend a number of zoning board meetings to understand that you have to show a specific hardship or that there's something particular to your property that you can't comply, and that just isn't the case. So there, you're getting a variance, significant variance as it is. So, I mean, it, they could make you put the fence at the front yard setback, and now it's, you know, tight up against, almost against the house. So I, I would suggest that you agree with the report and let's all move on.
Thank you kindly, I appreciate it. And again, thank you for your patience, but yes, again, you know, I, you know, I heed to their recommendations. That way, you know, again, that we can all move on.
Okay, so if you, you're okay with that 15 feet, I'm pretty sure we could, we could approve this, to be honest with you.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Cruz. Any other members of the board have any questions for Mr. Cruz? Any comments about this application? Hearing none, I'm going to open it to the public. Anyone in the public have any questions or comments about this application?
No one, Chairman.
Okay, close the public portion, and I make a motion to approve this application. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz, your application as amended has been approved. We will memorialize it at our next meeting in January. We'll send a copy of that document to you, and you'll need that for your permits.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone, greatly appreciate your time and your energy, thank you very much.
Have a good night, sir, appreciate you.
Thank you, good night, good night, everyone.
Let's move on to item number 7, 23-ZB-93V, Azar Nakvi? Is Azar Nakvi present?
Present, here.
Why, sir?
I'm good, how's everyone?
I need to swear you in, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Absolute truth.
Thank you, your name and address, please?
My name is Azar Nakvi, and I live at 75 Hall Street, Piscataway, New Jersey, 08854.
Thank you, could you explain to the board why you're here?
Mr. Chairman, maybe I can speed this along for the applicant?
I see that.
The only request here is to, the applicant to agree to allow for access through the easement in the back. Otherwise, there are no recommendations.
Yes.
Can you agree with that, sir?
Yes.
Good. It saves a lot of time and energy. Any other members of the board have any questions for this applicant? Any comments? Hearing none, I'm going to open it to the public. Anyone in the public have any comments or questions about this application?
No one, Chairman.
Okay, close the public portion, I make a motion to approve this application, can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Nakvi, your application's been approved. We will memorialize it in a written document at our next meeting and send that document to you. You'll need that for your permit.
Appreciate it, thank you so much for your time.
Good luck, sir, good luck.
Appreciate it, thank you, be well.
Item number 8, 23-ZB-90V, Sheila Hobson? Is Sheila Hobson present?
It's, it's Chilia Hobson.
Leah, I apologize, ma'am.
It's okay.
Thank you, I need to swear you in, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Your name and address, please?
Chilia Hobson, 2602 Wade Street, Piscataway, New Jersey, 08854.
Thank you, could you explain why you're here?
Yes, I'm applying for a variance. My property, when I purchased my home, there was a, a shed, a pool, and a fence. That was 20 years ago. I put up a new fence about three months ago, and I didn't apply for a permit because the fence person told me that it was in kind and that I didn't need one. But apparently I did. So I came to DPW and I applied for a variance for all the items that's on my property because I didn't know that there was never a permit for any of them because I bought the property in 2004.
Mr. Chadwick? May I try me in for a second?
The, and, um, Officer Devi, did you see the report of Mr. Henry Hinterstein?
Are, I'm sorry, are you speaking to me, sir?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, what, what was the question?
Did you see the report from the, it's from Henry Hinterstein? It says Division of Engineering and Planning and Development. Did you see that report?
No, I didn't.
Yeah, I mailed it out to you, Ms. Hobson, about a month or so ago.
Oh, I'm sorry, but I, I don't recall.
There's a number of things that he's recommending that adjust the location of various sheds. Nothing would happen if we carried this to the meeting in, in January, everything would stay the same. You don't have to take your fence down, you don't have to do anything. But I think you should read this report and contact Mr. Hinterstein so that you can either agree or disagree with his recommendations.
You know, I just remembered, I, when you said about the shed, I think in his report, he talked about moving the fence back. I think that was what he said, but.
Well, that's why I'm suggesting that you talk to him. I did a reconnaissance before this meeting, and the fence is there.
Yes.
So to move it, I think you might want to discuss that with Mr. Hinterstein. The other adjustments to the sheds, I think it would be better off if you spoke with him directly. Nothing will fall off this edge of the world here if you push it back to January. And I'm sure the board would let, let this go forward with no further appetite.
I, I absolutely agree, Ms. Hobson. I think it's in your best interest to deal with Mr. H, Mr. Hinterstein one-on-one so you can better ascertain your options.
Okay.
And we don't want to move ahead, if you don't agree to the stuff that we're talking about right now, we don't want to go ahead with a vote now because it wouldn't probably be in your best interest. So Laura, can we put this on for the January, late January meeting?
Well, we could do January 11th.
Okay, that's even better. Does anyone know Henry's back?
He's back on Tuesday.
Okay, good. I'll just have Ms. Hobson try and get in touch with him if you would. Get in touch with Laura, and she'll put you over to his office, and then you can coordinate, you know, meeting.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
So anybody here on the Hobson matter, 2602 Wade Street? That matter is going to be adjourned until January 11th, 2024 with no further notice by the applicant. The only notice you're receiving is my announcement here tonight. Okay, thank you, Ms. Hobson.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
See you next month. Item number 9, 23-ZB-98V, Shiv Patel?
Good evening, members of the board, board professionals, this is Tim Art. I'm an attorney licensed in the state of New Jersey, and I'm here representing Shiv K. Patel for a property located on 165 Cassuth Street. The purpose of this application is the, the applicant is looking to build a second-story addition to the house. There are a number of variances that were called out, although none of these are caused by the second-story addition. These are all existing variances that were put in place by the previous owner of the property. If you look at those variances, I'll just highlight some quickly, they're all related to setbacks, and they're all rather de minimis, some of them are as low as basically half a foot. And as I said, they are existing. The only one that is not setback-related is a fence that is in the current right-of-way. I do have a report from Mr. Hinterstein that's dated December 11th, 2023. There's really only three comments on that, and just taking the tenor of the, of the evening, I think I'll just address the quickly, and I think that'll go, that'll be the quickest way to go about this. The, we will agree to all of Mr. Hinterstein's comments. His first comment is to basically remove the fence from the right-of-way. So that does eliminate one of the variances that we were requesting, we were hoping to keep it there. But I had, had a conversation with the applicant, and we do agree to, if we are approved, to condition that on removing the fence. There's also a call for some screening and buffering around the existing garage, we will comply with that as well. And finally, there's a call for a five-foot temporary construction easement with, with which we will agree with as well. Shiv Patel is present. I don't believe he would need to directly testify, but he is here if the board has any questions of him. Apart from that, I have one witness, that would be our architect, Mr. Steve Druga, who is present and is just going to briefly take us around the, the proposal. And then I think, I think that would be it for us.
Please proceed.
There are no variances associated with the building construction.
That's correct, Mr. Chadwick, these are all existing variances. Nothing is being triggered by the additional second story.
I think the pictures speak for themselves, it's up to the board.
Yeah, I think we can move forward with this at this point, I don't think we need to hear any further testimony. Unless any other members of the board have any questions or comments?
I am picking, you're putting down, Mr. Cahill. I, I will leave it to the board to make their decision.
Appreciate you.
And you, to confirm, you've agreed with all of the recommendations of the report?
Correct, all of, all three comments of Mr. Hinterstein will be agreed with, will be complied.
Any other members of the board have any questions? Hearing none, I'm going to open it to the public. Any member of the public have any questions or comments about this application?
Anyone in the public, if you would like to comment, you'd have to raise your hand so I could see that you have a question. No one, Chairman.
Okay, close the public portion, and I'd make a motion to approve this application, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
We'll memorialize it in January. Okay, moving forward, let's go to item number 10, 23-ZB-64/65V, BYO-USA.
Mr. Chairman, Jim Stahl, I, I really have nothing to say, I'm really here just to receive the decision. You will recall that there were five members present at the hearing last month, and, you know, to protect my client, although I trust the board, I elected to wait until this month where additional members could read and certify the transcript. If you have any questions, any member has a question, Mr. Kinney, I have Mr., I have my engineer on this phone call, Chris Zelay, and we'll answer any questions if there are any.
All of the members present tonight were either present last month or have certified that they read the transcript.
Thank you very much.
Do any members of the board have any questions? Need to open it to the public. Yes, do any members of the, of the board have any questions or comments about this application? Hearing none, I'm going to open it to the public. Any member of the public have any comments or questions about this application? Ms. Buckley?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to unmute all of them just to make sure, sometimes they have a problem if they're on their phone raising their hands.
Understood, understood, thank you.
Okay, members of the public, does anybody have any questions or comments on VYO USA? No one, Chairman.
Okay, close the public portion. I'd make a motion to approve this application with all the conditions that we put on it at the last meeting. Can I get a second?
I second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes. Mr. Stahl will memorialize this at our next meeting.
Thank you very much, and all of you have a very, very happy holiday and a happy new year.
Will do.
Thank you, you too, Mr. Stahl.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Okay, let's move on to item number 11, 23-ZB-95V, Kaz Beverly? Is Kaz Beverly present?
Yes, I'm present.
Mr. Britton, Beverly, I need to swear you in, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, could you explain to the board why you're here? First, give us your name and address.
Sure, Kaz Beverly, 358 Hazelwood Place, Piscataway, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before, before Mr. Hazel, Mr. Beverly, this is a condition that's been longstanding, and the report, Mr. Hinterstein indicates that adequate parking is available at the site, which is one of the reasons you have a garage. But the way it was done is that the garage still appears to exist from the street. It's, it's more of a storage area now, but I think all the aesthetic considerations and off-street parking considerations comply with township requirements, and Mr. Hinterstein's report doesn't make any other recommendations.
Yeah, in the, in the interest of expediting this process, I honestly think that we can move ahead on this, Mr. Beverly, right now.
Fantastic.
Okay, any other members of the board have any questions or comments about this application? Hearing none, I'm going to open it to the public. Anyone in the public have any questions or comments about this application? Ms. Buckley?
No one, Chairman.
Okay, close the public portion, and I'd make a motion to approve this application?
I'll second.
Thank you, please call the roll.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yeah, yes, I'm sorry. Beverly, your application's been approved. We will memorialize it in a written document at our next meeting and send that document to you.
Thank you so much, have a good evening, everyone.
Have a good evening, sir. Let's move on to item number 12, 23-ZB-100V, Robin Shepherd? Is Ms. Shepherd present?
Yes.
I need to swear you in, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, could I have your name and address, please?
Robin Shepherd, 181 Lakeside Drive North, Piscataway, 08854.
Thank you, could you explain to the board what you would like to do here?
We'd like to replace our back porch with a new porch that has a portico, a roof over it.
Mr. Chadwick?
The site impact report doesn't, any comments as to the reconstruction of the porch. But there are some questions. The survey doesn't show the fences on the property now. So it's, should be updated. The, is a fence easement necessary from the prior resolution when you were before the board previously? And that easement shown. There's also, in terms of relocation, the walkway and the walkway easement don't coincide. And that was one of the prior conditions.
Right.
To correct that. Updated survey showing that the easement has been relocated in the proper documentation in the future. And this, the last issue is, observe this bamboo on your property?
By the, by, on the opposite side, by the woods. On the opposite side of the easement.
It's, it's an invasive species, it's regulated by township ordinance, and the recommendation is either remove it or build a trench 24 inches deep around it so it'll be contained. Otherwise, it's just going to spread and spread and spread. The 24 inches, they're a low-rooted plant. And you have your choice of either taking it out or putting a trench around it to stop it from spreading.
Okay, we'll put a trench.
Okay. And the, get the updated survey, which you need to do anyway.
Okay.
Because it's, the prior condition was you relocate it, you can talk to Mr. Hinterstein on how, how it should be done, and give it to your surveyor, then you'll give the easement to the township, and you'll record it.
Okay, Mr. Hinterstein?
Yes.
Okay.
And he, he, call Laura's office, and she'll get you in contact.
Okay.
So you agree to those items?
Yes.
Jim, John, is there anything to mention about a driveway? Any issue there? I don't see it on the site impact, but I was, I was led to believe that there was some issue.
The back porch is not near the driveway at all.
No, we're aware of that, but there are other conditions on the property that need to be addressed once you're in front of us for the porch.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just trying to get to the bottom of it, ma'am, I'm trying to expedite the process.
Yeah, the driveway, when they relocate the easement, the driveway will no longer be in the easement. Right now it is.
Yeah, but I think the issue is whether or not she needs a paved driveway.
Oh. Is the driveway in poor condition?
No.
It's gravel. Is it gravel?
Yes, but it's edged with the Belgian block.
I think the recommendation normally is from the road itself, there should be a paved, 10, at least 10 feet of pavement off the main road to prevent stones from getting out onto the road to be kicked up into other vehicles and whatnot.
You can do that, and you can dump epoxy on it, and a lot of work, it's fine, it's well. That's what I did with my driveway.
Or put what?
It's an epoxy, you just pour, mix it up, and it looks like this gravel driveway, but it's solid surface, no stones bouncing out the street.
Yeah, man, the interest is, the interest is to keep the, the gravel off the main road because the tires kick it up and you break windshields and whatnot. So the township, when a situation like this comes in, you, you come in for something totally unrelated, we have an opportunity to correct a problem on your property. So if you want to go to, is it like a Home Depot, John, where she can get this, it's just a, a gallon of cord?
No, no, you know what? Just do the asphalt, that would be simpler.
I thought we were, like, there's no.
Well, why don't you do this? Why don't you discuss it with the engineering planning department that you know about an epoxy that can be mixed in with these stuff? And it makes a solid surface, there aren't going to be any rocks flying anyplace. And if they agree with it, then do that.
Okay, now I was under the impression that the driveway would need to be dealt with if we were selling the house.
Well, you're unmistaking.
Oh, okay, okay, so then.
If you make that a condition, I think we can move ahead with this, ma'am.
Yeah, I can, alright, so I have to discuss, call the planning department to discuss what to do?
Again, Mr. Hinterstein is the go-to guy.
Okay, okay, I got it.
Do you wanna move this back or make it a condition? Jim, how should I deal with it? We could make it a condition. Okay. Any other members of the board have any questions or comments?
What do you mean, make it a condition?
The alternative is that we adjourn your matter to another date and let you talk to Mr. Hinterstein in the interim. But if we don't do that and we act on the matter tonight, just make talking to Mr. Hinterstein a condition of the approval, you could move forward sooner.
Okay. I'll do that.
Okay. Do you wanna wait to speak to Mr. Hinterstein? Or do you wanna move ahead tonight?
Um, well
With one of the conditions, with one of the conditions being the 10-foot of asphalt?
Yes, I will do that, that's fine.
Well, fantastic, any other members of the board have any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'm gonna move it to the public, anyone in the public have any comments or questions for this application?
No one, Chairman?
Okay, close the public portion and I will make a motion to approve this application with the conditions we just stated. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tilley?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes. Ms. Shepherd, your application has been approved with some conditions. We will memorialize this in a written document at our next meeting in January, we'll send that document to you, you'll need that to get your building permit.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am, have a great night.
Have a nice holiday.
You too, ma'am. Item number 13, 22 dash ZB dash 69V Derek Bradshaw and Ida Gonzalez?
Yes, good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Erica Edwards appearing on behalf of the Bradshaws.
Good evening.
So we have Mr. Hinterstein's report here as well, and in the interest of keeping this moving, because it's, we know the board has a lot of business on the agenda. We note that Mr. Hinterstein noted that we purchased the property, our property at 1500 Quincy Street. We purchased it with the existing conditions, so in other words, the, we haven't done anything to the exterior but paint and replace that old wooden fence that was there. However, when we replaced the wooden fence with the vinyl fence that is now there, we played, we placed it in the precise same location. It's the same height and identical dimensions, it's just vinyl rather than wood. When we did that, we unfortunately did not realize that we needed a permit to replace it. We thought we didn't because there was an existing fence, but we made a mistake. And when, when it was brought to our attention, we went and applied for the permit, tried to, but we were denied because there are variance conditions that are apparent from, from, you know, largely as a function of, of our fence. So we see Mr. Hinterstein's recommendation here. Candidly, I wish we had reached out to him, to speak with him directly, because I'm, I'm not sure that we're clear on exactly what he's recommending here, but perhaps Mr. Chadwick can help us understand that.
You know, I think this is the case, the fence is there. Come to a resolution, Mr. Hinterstein's report is pretty clear. You obviously want to further discuss it. And I would suggest you carry this matter and speak with Mr. Hinterstein directly before the meeting in January.
You think he would meet us out there, Mr. Chadwick?
I can't speak for him, sure, I'm sure he would, but it's just a matter of scheduling.
Okay.
Alright, that's the recommendation, you think, you okay with that, Ms. Edwards?
Yes, I think that's a fine recommendation.
I think that'd be prudent, to be honest with you, okay. Laura? Is the 11th becoming packed now or no?
Not yet, January 11th.
Okay.
And if any revised plans are to be given, they have to be in 10 days before the meeting.
Understood, and would you like us to extend the time for the board to make a decision? Because I believe the time expires at the end of this month.
I'll, I'll look tomorrow and I'll email it to you.
Okay, very good, thank you for your help.
Have a great evening.
You too, thank you, happy holidays.
Thank you, ma'am. So anybody here on the Bradshaw and Gonzalez application, 1500 Quincy Street, that will be continued to January 11, 2024 with no further notice by the applicant?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am, have a good evening. Let's move on to item number 15, 23 dash ZB dash 103V VJ Singal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and esteemed members of the board and board professionals, my name is Tim Arch, attorney, licensed in the state of New Jersey here representing VJ Singal. This is for 446 Second Avenue. I believe the board is familiar with this application, this is an amended prior approval to, for Mr. Singal to construct a house. You may recall, this house was designed specifically for his handicapped daughter. She's wheelchair-bound, she has a very serious condition in which her skin is like crepe paper and braids very easily. So part of the design of the home is to allow, is to maybe make more ample space to allow her to, to move around freely. So I don't think I need to go into all that testimony over again with Mr. Singal, although he is here if the board has any direct questions. As you may recall, we were in front of the board not too long ago as a discussion item, because when construction of the house was going to be done, it was discovered that the water table was higher than, than was previously suspected. So because of that, that led to the design of the house having to be not changed at all, but basically lifted up. And at that time, we were asking to lift it up five feet to account for that water table. Mr. Hinterstein was at that meeting and he actually pointed out that raising it would trigger a variance. He was actually mistaken about that. He has since checked and there were no variances that were triggered in terms of numbers of floors and we are not exceeding or even meeting the maximum height for that area. So what we were proposing did not trigger any new variances, but Mr. Hinterstein was indicating that it would, that it may exacerbate existing variances. So we filed this, this amended application. We actually were able to, with our architect, Mr. Mark Marsil, we were able to actually reduce it again slightly so that we are now raising the home only about three feet from what it was. So even slightly less than what we were proposing at the discussion meeting. I think really the only question for the board is whether or not, is essentially if the board's decision to grant the variances at the original hearing would have been different had the building been three feet higher. It doesn't trigger any new variances. It's still underneath the maximum height for that zone, which is 35 feet, we are significantly under that. And really it comes down to, and the only comment that Mr. Hinterstein has on his report is that, is that the necessary testimony would have to be put on the record to justify this. Well, frankly, it's because of the water table, that's a topological feature of the undersized lot, I think would fall under a C1 hardship argument. But again, I don't think that we have to go through the rehashing all the testimony of Mr. Marsil. Mr. Marsil is here and he's available in case there is any questions from the board or the board professionals. But I think it really just comes down to the question of if that home design was three feet taller at the original application, would that have changed the board's unanimous vote to approve this? Or would the board still have voted? And I'll also point out, no members of the public voiced the objection at the, at the initial hearing. And although we haven't opened it up to the public yet, I would hope that there's no members of the public objecting to this, so.
Are there any members, I got it from here, Tim. Are there any other members of the board that have any questions or comments about this? Mr. Arch, did, had we shoot you an email or send you a letter stating that, that statement you just made about there being no variance on the, on books or anything?
Yes, he, he did, I actually, I actually emailed him after that meeting to ask if he could actually direct me to the, to the part of the ordinance that, that he was citing and he emailed me back to say that he was mistaken, that he was actually thinking of, I believe, another town potentially that he had worked in, so he did confirm that, I think it was an honest mistake, obviously.
I agree.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I think you ought to put on the, the maximum height allowed in this zone is, Mr. Arch?
Maximum height in the zone is 35 feet and we are actually, Mark, if you're here, do you have the, you know the height that we are at?
What?
Yes.
I propose now
I propose is 30.45 feet.
30.45.
And what was it when the original application was approved?
27.53.
Yeah, that's the three feet that Mr. Arch is talking about. Yeah.
Exactly, three feet, yes.
I, I don't think that's an issue.
But it's considerably less than the maximum allowed.
Correct, correct, agreed, agreed. Any other members of the board have any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna open it to the public, anyone in the public have any questions or comments about this application?
I have one, Chairman, hold on one second.
Sure.
His name is Rob.
Rob, can you raise your right hand, I need to swear you in?
Can you see me? Or hear me?
I can see your name. We can hear you, sir.
Okay.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Name and address, please?
Rob Crotto, 429 Patton Avenue, directly behind the lot.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
My, my only comment, I missed the original, we were away and couldn't see us, but I, I don't have a problem with the house and, and all that. It's just that by raising it, I just wanna make sure the grading does not put any water towards my property.
Kind of questions, sir.
That's my only, only issue. And if you know the history of those few houses, there used to be a drainage dish through there that has been, as work was done on each house, was filled in over the years, so I think that's your water issue.
If I could address that, Chairman, we don't have our engineer, John Dupont, here. I can say that I did confirm with him that the raising of the home does not change anything to do with the grading or the stormwater or the, or any of the engineering that was originally proposed. And in designing and building this house, I believe there's actually going to be improved stormwater management on the site because of our proposal. I believe there's a, I think there may be a dry well or some stormwater management measures that are taken. But again, I'm not an engineer, so I can't, I can't testify specifically to that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Arch. Any other questions, sir?
No, that was all, just, just
Okay, thank you for your, thank you for your input. Any other members of the public out there have any questions about this application?
No, Chairman.
Okay, close the public portion, I'd make a motion to approve this application, can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tilley?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes. We'll memorialize it in January.
Thank you so much.
Can I say something, Mr. Chairman?
Take care, have a good evening.
Yeah, no, my daughter was waiting for that day and you gave her that Christmas gift, so
We're, we're glad to help out. It does our hearts warm when we help, you know, residents out with situations like that, so you're more than welcome.
Thank you, thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Oh, my, my blessing, don't worry about it. Item number 16, 23 dash ZB dash 20V CZ Piscataway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is still Tim Arch, still licensed attorney in the state of New Jersey. I am here representing CZ Piscataway LLC. This is a bifurcated use variance, I'm sure the board is aware, but just, just to reiterate a bifurcated use variance, we're here asking for a use that is not permitted. If granted, we would then be coming back to the board with a full site plan. So there may be some aspects or some specific questions that really are more appropriate to be addressed at the site plan rather than the bifurcated use variance. But we are asking for the use in order to construct a self-storage facility in a residential zone. There are some additional variances that we've also identified, but again, all those will be addressed at the site plan, but we, we are addressing maximum building height, maximum building coverage, those are the main ones. Obviously, the use, the use as a self-storage, and then there is a parking deficiency required is 256 spaces, proposed are 17 spaces, that sounds like it is a astronomical difference. But what you will find, and I think what you'll find through our testimony and actually what is backed up by your own experts, your report from Dolan and Dean, is that the needs of parking and the traffic generated by self-storage is extremely low. And the ordinance and the parking calculations in the town are really not designed with self-storage in mind in any regard. So that's why you get that big disparity between what is required in parking and what is the reality actually required in parking. And again, I've, I've alluded to, we have some reports, we have Mr. Hinterstein's report from December 11, we have EPW member memo from October 23rd that essentially just says they will not comment until the site plan. We have a Dolan and Dean's report from November 6th, which I alluded to, which indicated that our parking variances can be granted with no negative impacts, there will be no additional traffic impacts and that we are actually providing more parking than what the standard, the not RSIS, but the equivalent of RSIS standard would be for self-storage in that area. And then finally, our last report is Mr. Chadwick's report of November 17th. So tonight I do have three witnesses, I have James Coakley, he's the representative of CZ Piscataway. I then have Mr. Matt Sharrow, he's from Dynamic Engineering, and then finally Allison Coffin is our professional planner. We also have our architect here as well, if the board has any questions. But again, I think, I think the architecture will be more directed towards the site plan application, although we do have, I believe, a signed detail that was, that was presented. Just to address one comment in Mr. Hinterstein's report, we are agreeing, I believe, to all of Mr. Hinterstein's comments. The only one that I think really we needed to address was moving of the, moving the sign. We have an, we were presenting a freestanding sign or a monument sign that we were proposing at eight feet from the right of way. He wanted it to be 10 feet, we will comply with that. So without any further ado, I believe Mr. Coakley is, is ready to be sworn in and testify.
May I interrupt one second before we start the testimony? Mr. Arch, have you got to have testimony relevant to the riparian question?
Yes, Mr. Sharrow will, Mr. Sharrow will address that, but I, but just as a, as a
Let me ask you the question, have you had an approval from DEP yet?
I, no, I don't believe we've had an approval from DEP, but I can tell you there are no wetlands on that property. Again, Mr. Sharrow can address that.
That has nothing to do with it, you got a stream next to your property, you get impacted by the riparian.
My understanding is that there is no riparian buffer, but again, I'll have Mr. Sharrow address that because he's much more qualified to address it than I am, Mr. Chadwick.
Could, I, I suggest we have that testimony first to be convincing, because if there is a riparian buffer required, you'll have significant impact on the use of the product, well, not the use, but how much you can use on that lot, so if, I, I don't wanna go through, you know, whatever time it is and we find out that, oops, we can't do it.
Understood, if it's the board's pleasure, I can start with Mr. Sharrow of Dynamic Engineering and
I think we should get disposed of that issue.
Thank you, thank you, John, I appreciate that, yeah, Mr. Arch, I'd like to proceed that way as well.
Certainly, Mr. Sharrow is available and I believe is ready to be sworn in.
Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
I do.
Your name and address, please?
It's Matthew Sharrow, Dynamic Engineering, 1904 Main Street in Lake Como, New Jersey.
Thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Mr. Sharrow, if you could just briefly give us the benefit of your credentials and let us know if you've ever been accepted as an expert in front of Piscataway boards?
So I've been practicing engineer for over 20 years now, PE since 2016, I'm a principal at Dynamic Engineering. I've been accepted at the planning board in Piscataway and then multiple municipalities around Piscataway and throughout
That's fine, sir, your qualifications are good.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, appreciate that.
All right, Matt, I'm gonna just uh, give you the uh, the floor, if you can please address Mr. Chadwick's concerns, uh, I guess initially.
Sure, no problem. So because this is not a cat, can I share my screen? So everybody has an idea of what we're talking about here?
Sure.
Can everybody see?
Yes. Yes.
Alright, so this is the colorized version of the site plan that was submitted, schematic site plan that was submitted as part of his application.
Um, this is marked as A1 since it's different from the supplemental.
Sure. It's a, I'll just, for the record, it's site and schematic landscape planning rendering, prepared by Dynamic Engineering dated twelve fourteen, two thousand twenty-three.
Thanks.
So with the 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 the. Question um. Here is we went out and did a uh walk of the site. Um, to determine if there was wetlands. It was determined that there was not wetlands associated with this. Uh, with this brook, Dottie's Brook. But there is a, there is a buffer to the top of uh bank of the brook. So that's what was flagged, was the top of bank of the brook. So that is what these, on the map that you see, and I'll zoom in a little bit for everybody to see. So you see these flat, these these markers, A1, A2, all the way up through. Uh, A eleven.
Yeah.
And there was more that went off the property. Uh, that is the top of, that is the top of bank for Dottie's Brook. And associated with that is a fifty-foot buffer, and that fifty-foot buffer is this line right here. Um, if you can all see on my screen that I'm 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 traveling along, it's the multi-dash with the dot uh line. That's the fifty-foot buffer to the top of bank, associated with the Dottie's Brook. So as you can see, it basically falls off the property. Um, for most of it, except for the the southwest or northwest corner. And the northeast corner of the property, where we are not impacting that area at all. And just to further the DEP questions, there is also a flood hazard area associated with the brook. And that elevation is uh ranges between sixty-seven and sixty-eight uh flood elevation. And this, the improvements of this site are about ten feet higher than that elevation, so there's no impact from the flood hazard area as well. So from from our perspective, from DEP perspective, there's no impact on on the brook. Uh, or the flood hazard area with the improvements of this project.
You didn't address riparian requirements.
This is, yeah, this is, this is not a, this is not a category one, so there's no three-hundred-foot riparian here. It's gonna be, it's open water, so it's based on the top of bank.
I'm not talking about three hundred, well, you're talking to. Sort of width of the riparian, but. I'm just talking about generally, the applications I've seen last several years. DEP lays a riparian buffer of a hundred and fifty feet. On intermittent streams.
Not not because this is state open water, this is, this is based on the top of bank. And associated with the flood hazard area. So we're looking at a fifty-foot buffer here. To the top of bank.
Mr. Chadwick, if I may, um, as you had indicated before, uh, really, that would, if there is a riparian impact, that would impact the site plan. Uh, more so that it would impact really this bifurcated use variance.
But I think it would, I think it would relate to your. Well, because you're asking for coverage variances and. Uh, various other variances, they might all go away. If we had to deal with riparian, but. Uh, I'm not gonna get argumentative about, heard the testimony. Uh, the expert says. He's, this is open state waters. And doing from top of bank and. Uh. I'm not gonna comment on whether DEP is always consistent or not.
I haven't commented on that either, Mr. Chadwick.
Um, and it's safe to say, uh, Mr. Sharrow, just to piggyback on that, um, obviously DEP would have jurisdiction, and we will obviously have to follow whatever. Uh, DEP regulations uh are imposed, is that correct?
Yeah, I think. Yeah, I mean, we don't, nobody wants to get caught. Flat footed on this thing. Have you got any permission from DEP at this point?
We have not.
Have you approached them?
No, because we would need full site plans for that.
What are the reasons that we're requesting the bifurcated?
We've had, we've had several applications where we had used variances and all of a sudden. DEP gets into the act and the. Me.
Mr. Chadwick, if if I could, I.
I I know, I. Is that for me?
No, somebody's got a feedback, their phone's too close to their mic. John, proceed.
I think we can accept the testimony. And they go with their own risk, I mean. They haven't approached DEP. They're going from. Their experience and their knowledge of the regulations. And uh, accept that.
Okay. Thank you. Proceed, Mr. Arch.
Uh, so Mr. Chairman, since you already have the uh, the floor, if you can just uh, take us the rest of your testimony, and then I'll I'll uh, double back to Mr. Coakley uh for the uh, for his testimony.
Sure thing. Um, so real quick, I just wanna, you know, um, go through some existing conditions, some proposed conditions of the of the property. Um, and I'll make this, I'll make this quick, cause everybody knows, you know, where we're at here. Uh, this is block five six zero one, lot two point oh five. The address is sixteen fifty-nine South Washington Avenue, uh, also known as County Route six fifty-five. Uh, uh, let me share my screen again. Um, screen, share. Can everybody see this, the screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, so this is uh, this is a colorized version of the aerial map exhibit, prepared by Dynamic Engineering dated. This will be A two, yes. Prepared by Dynamic Engineering dated twelve fourteen, two thousand twenty-three. Um, the, the property in question is located at the center of the screen. Uh, for the the purpose of this presentation, north is to the left of the screen. Um, noted by the north arrow at the top right corner. Um, to the north of the site is the Piscataway Town Center. To the east of the site is count vacant county-owned land, uh, that's wooded up here. To the south of the site is more county-owned land with a residential use and municipal land, uh, own land beyond. Uh, to the west is South Washington Avenue with the industrial, the um. South uh, Washington Ave, industrial park across the street. Um. And moving on to a more detailed look at existing conditions. This is an aerial map exhibit at thirty scale, uh, prepared by Dynamic Engineering dated twelve fourteen, two thousand thirteen. I'll call it Exhibit A three. This just shows you a better view of what's going on on site today. There are some multiple structures on site with a driveway, a couple curb cuts along South Washington Avenue. Uh, some sheds, some two-story residential structures, uh garage, uh some equipment stored in the back. Um, but uh mostly, you know, you know, cleared for the, for the residential portion and then some wooded area. Um, the brook, just so everybody's aware. The brook is located basically along this um zone line between the the town center and the property in question. Moving on to proposed um, conditions, this is again Exhibit A one, I believe, we we called it Site and Schematic Landscaping Plan Rendering. Um, I'm just gonna walk you through the plan really quick. Um, as you enter the site through a full movement driveway along South Washington Avenue, you have a twenty-four-foot drive aisle that circulates around the entire building. Uh, for full, full circulation, full two-way circulation around the building. As you come up to the the front corner of the building, you have eight parking stalls uh for access to uh some units. Uh, as well as the office, and you have a security gate which allows you to uh access the rest of the property. Behind that security gate, you have nine parking stalls uh located here. Um, those are for, you know, patrons to use uh while they're there, and then we have a thirty-foot wide loading zone along the. The south side of the building, at the end of that loading zone is your ten by, your ten by twenty truck uh trash enclosure. As we work our way around the site, you see the twenty-four-foot wide drive aisle that has uh full movement in both directions, as well as the ten-foot striped area along the building. Uh, this is for loading and unloading of the um. At-grade um, units. As well as gives a little bit more room for trucks, you know, moving trucks or vehicles to pass each other. Um, as you work your way around the site and back towards the front, there's another security gate, and then then you can exit the site from um this, this driveway. Uh, you know, this is schematic landscaping, but obviously we would plant some evergreens along the front and sides of the the. The improvements to uh buffer the, you know, supplement and buffer the existing uh. The existing um trees and landscaping to remain. Uh, there's some decorative landscaping as you enter the site, uh around the proposed ID sign. Uh, the ID sign would be set back to ten feet as suggested. Um, and will obviously be out of any site triangles as suggested. And then we have a little bit of landscaping uh as you enter the site, it's pretty up that front office area. Um, it's a, you know, pretty straightforward um. Storage application here, there's nothing, nothing too crazy about it. Um, and you know, as noted before, it's a fourth thou- a forty-two thousand five hundred and seventy-four square foot footprint. Uh, three stories high for a total of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and twenty-two square feet.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Sharrow, and just to just confirm, you've had an opportunity to look over all the reports, correct?
I I have, yes.
Okay, and you don't see anything in those reports that we can't comply with, correct?
Not at all, no.
Alright. Uh, I have no further uh direct questions for Mr. Sharrow.
Do any members of the board have any questions, Mr. Sharrow?
I have a question.
Please do.
Um, is there any hydrants around that, that building, that chalk shirtool, an event of a fire?
Uh, you know what, I will look um for that. I know there's a water main that runs through South Washington Avenue. Um, so let me, let me take a look while you go to the next witness, um, and I will, I can come back.
You can double back, good.
Yeah, we can double back, I don't wanna waste time looking and.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem.
We'll come back to you, Artie.
Okay.
Alright, Mr. Arch, please, uh, go to your next witness.
Yeah, no, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Steve.
Yeah, e- entrance and exit are gonna be only from the now northbound side of traffic, or is it gonna be? People heading southbound as well? Will people go up and drive across the two lanes and take a, a left turn coming out?
Um. They they can. Um. But yeah, no, it's it's it it's basically for the, for the, you know. The the. South, the south, the northbound side of the road.
I'll also indicate that um, uh, that is a a county roadway, so um.
Yeah.
It's on that roadway and those sorts of things are gonna be obviously under the county jurisdiction when we make that that application to them, if we are approved. And you'll also have an opportunity to see that more fully fleshed out during the site plan, um, if we are approved for this.
Do you know off the top of your head if that's a double yellow line there?
It is not right there, that's, that's why we, that's why we placed it down that way, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, okay. Yeah, thanks, thanks, Steve. Any other members of the board have any questions?
Hearing none, move on to your next witness, Mr. Arch.
Great, thanks, guys.
Appreciate it.
You'll get back to us, right?
Yeah, I'm gonna look right now.
Thanks, sure.
Yeah, Mr. Sharrow, if you can just uh, uh, stop sharing your, uh, thank you, there you go. Um, next witness would be, uh, let's uh, go back to Mr. James Coakley.
Mr. Coakley, are you present?
Yes.
Would you raise your right hand? You swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Your name and address, please?
Sure, James Coakley, we have the CZ Piscataway, one thirty-four West Twenty-Ninth Street, New York, New York, one triple zero one.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Coakley, if you can, just briefly tell the board a little bit about uh yourself, about CZ Piscataway and about. Uh, why it is that uh, that this site is so suitable, or that Piscataway is so suitable for this use.
Sure, thank you. Uh, good evening, Chairman and members of the board. Um, as mentioned, James Coakley on behalf of CZ Piscataway, uh, we appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Uh, you know, our firm is a private. Uh, privately owned developer and operator of self-storage facilities. We've been doing such since uh about two, year two thousand. Uh, we've been developing Class A uh facilities, um, you know, throughout the New Jersey metro New York City area. In that time, we've developed probably in excess of three million square feet of uh similar projects to what we're proposing here tonight in Piscataway. Uh, we make long-term investments in the communities uh where we develop. Uh.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. Uh, and ultimately, we think that the uh residents and uh business owners of Piscataway will uh be very uh. Happy and pleased with what we can uh bring to the community here. Uh, we've performed significant um. Diligence and market analysis, and we're very pleased with with the uh strong business fundamentals that uh we've, we've uncovered here at Piscataway. Um, we've taken into account existing storage facilities. Uh, that are operating now in addition to anything that has been, you know, proposed or under construction. Um, and in our analysis, we still believe that um. This particular trade area is significantly underserved. Um, especially when compared to other trade areas and on a national level. Uh, we think we're gonna be a very complimentary fit uh along uh South Washington Avenue, especially with some of the uh. Current development that's going on uh across the street, the uh JLL project. Um, you know, and for that, we think that we're gonna be, you know, it's gonna be a successful operation. Um, you know, the f- flexibility um. That storage adds, you know, it it really fills the need of both local residents and and small businesses. Um, you know, we're proposing to develop a Class A modern storage facility. Um, the facility will have a mix of different size uh storage units that will all be housed uh within a climate-controlled environment. Uh, we are not proposing any outside storage at this particular facility. Um, the site will have, uh, you know, modern. Safety and security features, um, which will include, you know, site lighting, digital security cameras. Computerized access control systems as well as on-site uh staff for uh support purposes. Um, we anticipate that the uh facility would be staffed by three to four employees. Um, seven days a week. Uh, our store or, you know, office hours typically range between eight AM and six PM Monday through Saturday. Um, usually a little shorter day on Sunday. Um, you know, customers, we would expect to have a grant access from six AM to ten PM at night. Uh, and that would be done via the uh controlled access systems. Um. You know, I know we, you know, we have other professionals here that can, you know, continue to provide uh other insight, but I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Cozler, just a, real quick to piggyback on your testimony. Um, so. Just to touch upon the parking, based on your experience with self, self-storage and based on what you just indicated with. Um, the the number of employees that you anticipate being there, do you, do you. See that the uh, the amount of parking that we're offering is more than adequate uh for both uh customers and for employees at the site?
A- absolutely, probably, probably in my certified double of what we really need, but uh.
Inex.
We're fortunate to have the area that we can provide it, so, so we will.
Okay, excellent, and there's not gonna be any boat or RV storage uh there, you had indicated outdoor storage, but does that include that?
That, that's correct.
Okay, um. Uh, and I have no more further uh questions of uh Mr. Coakley.
Any members of the board have any questions or comments?
I have one question of the board members. The individual units. Are they gonna have any electric outlet lights, anything in there? Or are they? Uh, open the door and you give the light from the hallway?
Yes, uh, yes, Mr. Chad, yeah, typically there won't be any outlets inside, there would be outlets. Uh, for, in the, in some of the hallways for staff for cleaning purposes. They typically have a key lock over them, so people can't plug um electric cords and things like that in them. And then the, the lighting in the hallways uh would be uh on a a sensor system. So that they don't stay on all night if if nobody's there, obviously. Uh, some of the larger units will have a convenience light located in it, but again, that would also be tied into. Uh, the hallway lighting system as well on a sensor, so it's, they're raised up pretty high, so people can't get into them.
Okay. And you have all the other standards, no fuel, no any. You know, no guns, none of that stuff can go in.
No, no E-bikes, uh, no lithium batteries, uh, none of, none of those good things, absolutely.
Okay. What would the hours of operation be?
Uh, so, so again, the office hours for staff, uh, customers would be eight AM to six PM, uh, Monday through Saturday, and then. Yeah, again, maybe, maybe the same or a little shorter on Sunday, and then access hours for clients would be six AM to ten PM, seven days.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other members of the board have any questions?
Yeah, just one, is the building gonna be sprinkled in any way, shape or form? Absolutely, it'll be fully sprinkled. Okay.
Thanks, Artie. Any, anyone else? Okay, Mr. Arch, you can move on.
Thank you, uh, our final witness tonight is uh Ms. Allison Coffin, our professional planner.
Ms. Coffin, could you raise your right hand?
Yes, I do.
Your name and address, please?
Allison Coffin, spelled C-O-F-F-I-N. I work for James W. Higgins Associates, we're at fourteen Tilton Drive in Ocean Township, New Jersey.
I believe Ms. Coffin has been accepted as a professional planner before this board on prior occasions.
I believe so.
My license and certification are still in good standing.
That's good news.
If you can, the floor is yours. Please give us the benefit of your expert analysis.
Sure. The property that we're looking at tonight is a three-point-seven acre, a regularly shaped lot. It's got four hundred and fifty-five feet of frontage on South Washington Avenue, which is a four-lane road. The lot contains two detached structures, which tax records indicate were both dwellings. The surrounding area is not developed residentially, residentially. The lot to the north is a large-scale retail center across Dade's Brook. The area to the west across South Washington is developed with a large industrial park. There appears to be a tree recycling operation of some sort south of the site, also on South Washington. And surrounding the site itself on three sides is county open space with municipally-owned lands further to the south. The applicant is requesting the board's permission to develop the site with a three-story self-storage use that's supported by seventeen parking spaces, landscaping, lighting, fencing, and a freestanding sign. The site is in the R twenty residential zone where this use is not permitted, so the applicant is requesting D one variance relief. There's some other bulk variances that will be associated with this application. A height where thirty-five feet is the limit and the building is thirty-eight point three-three. A building coverage where twenty percent is permitted and they're requesting twenty-six and change. Parking, which again looks significant on paper at two hundred and fifty-six spaces and they're proposing seventeen. Parking and driveways accessing a commercial use in a residential zone. Fence height and freestanding sign. Again, commercial uses in a residential zone. It's my opinion that special reasons exist for the granting of the use variance and that the site is particularly suited to the proposed use. And there's no significant detriment to the zone planning or the surrounding properties that would result from this variance. This subject site is exceptionally large for the zone, having an area that's like twelve times the minimum required for the zone. It's extremely deep. It is the only property in the R twenty zone that is north of the traffic light on South Washington, that, that traffic light that serves the industrial park across the street. A location which distinguishes the site from the remainder of the R twenty zone, and it is not currently served by public sewer. The proposed self-storage use is ideal for the site, which is located in an area of transition from high-intensity residential use and industrial use, I'm sorry, high-intensity retail and industrial use to the county open space and the municipally-owned parcels to the south. The use itself is quiet and has low traffic volumes. The shape and depth of the site allows for the building to be placed at an angle to the frontage, which combined with landscaping and fencing will soften the appearance of this structure from the roadway. And the indoor nature of site activity limits impacts in terms of noise and any potential impact on Dade's Brook. Therefore, the proposed self-storage use on this site makes an effective and appropriate use of, as a unique property. And in so doing, this variance advances the purposes of the municipal land use law with regard to providing space in an appropriate location for this type of commercial use. Now, this is a bifurcated application, but if the board would like to have some comfort with the bulk variance relief that's being requested, I, I can address that in broad strokes if, if that would be appropriate at this time.
The more we get on the record, the better, I think.
You got it then. So, some of these variances, the bulk variances being requested are directly, directly related to the application of residential zoning standards to what is a non-residential use. So, those would be subsumed within the use variance requested. And that's the height, the ordinance height limit of thirty-five feet is intended to control single-family residential use. In the zones where self-storage is permitted, the LI one and the LI five zones, the height allowed is forty to fifty feet, which indicates that the height proposed is appropriate for this use. The building coverage, also as with height, the building coverage is intended to control residential use. And the coverage that's proposed is appropriate for this use. The parking in a residential zone, if the board sees fit to grant the use variance, then the parking associated for this use and the, the access for this use would also have to be located in the same site. And same with the freestanding sign. Signage that's proposed is appropriate and it's required for the use to function. The biggest variance that the applicant is requesting is for the parking. But the parking that's proposed is appropriately scaled to the use. The ITE's fifth edition parking generation manual would indicate a demand for a self-storage facility of this size of thirteen spaces, as is, you know, stated in your board's Traffic Expert Review Letter. So, the seventeen parking spaces that the applicant's proposed is more than adequate and can be granted in a manner that would not have an imposition on the public. In fact, I think over-parking it at two hundred and fifty-six spaces, while this operator has said that they have no interest in outdoor storage of vehicles as part of their business model, having too much parking on a self-storage facility does create that sort of temptation. So, we're, we're far better having the seventeen parking spaces than more than two hundred, if seventeen is, is enough to operate the facility. There's also a six-foot-high fence in the front yard, and that's for security purposes. The applicant is proposing to screen that fence fully with seven-to-eight-foot cedars, at least on this concept plan. And that may become more extensive landscaping at the time of site plan, so this fence will not be viewed publicly. These variances can be granted also under the C two standard. They allow the site to be developed in a manner which advances the purposes of the municipal land use law, providing adequate light, air and open space and providing sufficient space for a commercial use in an appropriate location. And the benefits of these variances would outweigh the detriments. The benefits include permitting the applicant to properly develop the site. And there would be no significant detriment that results from the bulk variances. The variances, in my opinion, would not substantially impair the intent and purpose of your master plan and zoning ordinance. Site itself present contains non-conforming uses or was in the past developed with two residences on one lot. And the site is unique and distinct from the remainder of the nearby R twenty zone. The proposed use in this case is uniquely suited to this unique property.
I'm sorry, Tim, go ahead. I was going to ask if anyone remembers, any members of the board have any questions or comments? We good, John?
Yes.
Okay. Hearing none, I guess you can make your summation, Mr. Arch.
If I can just, I'll just back. We did get confirmation from Mr. Sharrow. There is a, a fire hydrant on the property or on the, I guess, on the, along the roadway and obviously, any sort of issues with fire will be addressed at the site plan. I don't know if Mr. Sharrow, if we need any more information from Mr. Sharrow to answer that. I forget which member of the board asked that question about the.
It was Artie. Hi, Dekka. Could you put that picture up and, and tell us where the fire hydrant is on, on the property?
It's not on the property. Can you ever see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
So, it's not on the property. This is the right-in entrance to the industrial facility across the street. There is a fire hydrant right here across the street.
So, it's on the opposite side of the South Wash?
It's on the opposite side of South Washington, directly across from the facility.
Artie, does that, does that answer your question, sir?
Yeah, I would prefer that if they put one on that property in the event of a fire, you're going to shut down all of Washington Avenue and create a major traffic problem.
Yeah, as I said, at, at, at site plan, I think this will be more thoroughly looked into, especially by, you know, fire safety and all that, all that sort of stuff. That's certainly something that I think will be addressed during site plan.
Okay.
Your client indicated that this building would be fully sprinkled.
Correct.
So, there's going to be, you know, public water brought onto the site, for sure.
Yeah, there'll, there'll be domestic water and, and fire service.
Okay, we can address that down the road. Any other members of the board have any questions, comments? It's all up to you, Tim. Summations?
I, I don't think there's really much need to, to.
I totally agree. And we're totally in agreement with Henry Hinterstein's site impact, correct? We said that?
Yes.
We're going to agree with all of the reports.
Got it, okay.
Agreed to all the reports and, and moved the sign. That was the, the.
Let's keep it short and sweet. I'm going to open it to the public. Anyone in the public have any questions or comments about this application?
No, and Chairman?
Okay, close the public portion, and I would make a motion to approve this application. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, call roll?
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tilery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yeah.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
I'm sorry, who, who seconded the motion?
Artie Hidaka.
Thank you.
Good, Jim. We'll memorialize it in January.
Thank you so much, everybody. Everybody have a wonderful holiday and a happy new year. And thank you for being so efficient tonight, too.
Thank you.
The resolution, the board retains jurisdiction on the site plan.
Well, that's what the board does. They have to come back here for the site plan. That's jurisdiction.
Good.
Yeah, policy-wise, I don't know whether the resolution at this time. I'm concerned that DEP may act different than your expert believes. I think there should be a restriction of filing the site plan, assume you have approval, that you have DEP at least tentative approval of all of the permits that you need before you go forward.
Mr. Coakley, is that something that you would agree to or?
You're going to have to get them.
Well, I, I understand. You're correct. I'm just, I, just for timing purposes, I wouldn't want to be prevented from proceeding at our risk with site plan on a township level if we are still held up with DEP. So, perhaps just confirmation that there is no.
What timing? If you can't get by DEP, what, what are you talking about timing? What does that?
I'm saying because going in front of the township with a, with a site plan, obviously, obviously, the goal would be to submit those both simultaneously in front of the township while we're pursuing our DEP approvals as well. So, I wouldn't want one to necessarily hold up the other. And again, it would be at our risk to proceed forward.
You've heard my rec, you've heard my recommendation. Your boards heard your comments as well.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll be in touch with you for some lineups, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Arch.
Thank you.
Have a great night. Let's move on to item number twenty, adoption of resolutions from the regular meeting of November ninth, two thousand twenty-three.
First resolution, Marissa Collette Bay, which you voted to approve.
You went out, Jim.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel? Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Next one is Gaia Try Naye, which you voted to approve. Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Those are all the resolutions I have to see.
Item number twenty-one is adoption of minutes from the regular meeting of November ninth, two thousand twenty-three. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number twenty-two is a German. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Always a pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. I thought we'd be here a little bit longer, but you got a great chairman.
All right. Happy and healthy new year, everyone.
Happy holidays.